Good evening, everyone, and, oh, this is loud, all right. Good evening, and welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. Could you please join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the which stands our nation under God, in whose deliverable liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right, we start off tonight's school committee agenda with the hearing of visitors. Under the hearing of visitors rules, visitors will have up to three minutes to speak. There is no interaction between the school committee and what is being said. We would, we'll take matters under advisement for further review. So, we, I believe, have two people. First person is Bradley Soufant. Mr. Soufant, please join us. Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Good, good. Press the button and it'll go green.
Okay, okay.
Great.
So, today I just wanted to come and invite you guys to my after-school program. It runs from Monday through Thursday, and we have some young people who would like to talk to you all about the things that they feel should be evolved within the school. You know, a lot of them go to Brockton High School, they're very outspoken, they're educated on what they would like, and I always tell them that if you want to make a change in the school, then you have to come correct. Many of them couldn't come today solely because of the fact that they're high school students and they don't have the transportation, parents are at work, but on behalf of them, they believe that the school, Brockton High School, can evolve in terms of the way that the curriculum is set up. See, I have a large population of students of color who come to my program, and one of the main things that they stress to me is the fact that they have been indoctrinated to only know one culture in the American history. They don't feel like all American history is being represented equally, so they would like to propose that all American history be represented in the curriculum. A second thing is they believe that there can be better ways that teachers and students gain interaction, and I agree, because some of the issues that I was going through in high school, I would say that Brockton High School has changed a lot. They're not suspending the way that they used to, but they do feel as though that there is some teachers who still can misuse the current system that is in place, and they do still propose that we find more ways to implement more restorative practices. Now, again, I don't go to Brockton High School anymore. I am solely just a voice for the youth, for the community, and I agree. I truly feel like if Brockton High School's gonna evolve, and I see these middle school students, I work at Boys and Girls Club, I work with them, I'm telling you right now, their mentality, the system that's in place will not really help them. We need to evolve as the younger folks come into the school, and we need to make sure that we create a system that's conducive with the way that they learn. And, again, we invite you to come to TTY so that you guys can hear from their own mouths what they would like changed. We meet every Monday through Thursday from, in R 205, from 2:00 to 3:30. I appreciate you guys listening, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Soufant, before you leave, can you just give Mr. Thomas a phone number so we can contact with regard to the, a meeting? Thank you. Okay, second person, Ms. Michelle Stanfield. Good eve, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me this evening. I am a parent. My child is a freshman at Brockton High School. She did grades six through nine currently in the Brockton Public School system, and I'm just here today because I just have some concerns as far as resources are concerned about how we are funding the school system, how, and specifically how the high school is being funded. I am very concerned that our children are going to be left behind. I got my child's, you know, we looked at all of her materials this year, and, you know, her bio, biology book was published the year she was born, so that book is at least 15 years old, and I get worried as I, I know that my child loves the sciences, and I worry that the resources available to her, whether it is the curriculum, the textbooks, the actual hands-on activities, I know that she is not receiving the same level that students across the state are receiving. As an educator, I am in districts all the time, and I can tell you that our children are not getting what they need. Our teachers are not getting what they need. We need to seriously consider how we are funding and what we are investing in, as our children's education is just entirely too important for us to continue to face these budget cuts year after year that is continuing to rob our kids of what they need. In the next decade or so, as we know, to be true across this country, we are facing the invention of artificial intelligence and automation, and these things are going to have an impact on how our kids learn, what they're learning, and I would love to see Brockton be on the cutting edge of that and be driving us forward so that, because our, our economy is going to evolve and change, and our kids need to be prepared for that. I fear that if we continue to face these budget cuts year after year, and we continue to lose teachers, and we continue to not evolve our curriculum, that our kids are not going to be ready in the next few years. I think that we need to be spending significant time and energy and resources looking at investing in teacher development and ensuring that our teachers are, we want to make sure that our kids have the best people in front of them, that they understand the standards, that they understand best practices to move students and, and really invest in them and their learning, and I would love to see us develop a true culture of achievement across the district, where every child is getting what they need in order to be successful and not just meet the standards, but exceed them. And sadly, right now, I am just not seeing that. I think that it is critical that we move forward with plans around a new high school, even for us to remain competitive as a community, as a city, when we have Stoughton with a new high school, we have all of our surrounding districts with new high schools, we look crazy. How are we supposed to compete with the family that wants to buy a house in this area when everyone else has new high schools, new this, new that, curriculum that's up to date, textbooks, et cetera? What are we offering new families? What are we offering? I think that Brockton has tremendous potential. I work as an educator, and I, and actually, the case study on Brockton is part of my curriculum, so I've seen it be done. We know that we have the ability to make extreme gains with kids, and they're the same kids, and we need to get back to that. And I don't know what it's gonna take budget-wise, I'm happy to advocate in whatever way I can, but I have a lot of concerns about where we are as a district. I have a lot of concerns for our kids, because quiet as it's kept, every single kid in our district is a genius, we just need to foster it. So, thank you for hearing me. I hope to continue this conversation, but please hear me, our children deserve more.
Thank you, and we do not disagree. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is the bundling of the routine items that the school committee needs to take a vote on, and this is an opportunity for any of the members to remove and discuss a particular item. Is there anything that a particular school committee member would like to talk about? Mr. DiAgostino.
Item E.
Item E. Anyone else? Mr. Sullivan.
Item N, and O.
Item N and O. Okay, anything else? No? Okay.
A question. Could either you or the superintendent take a minute and explain these submittals? It just seems like there's quite a few of them on there.
Certainly. Which ones would you like, F and G and?
All, all the way down to M.
Okay.
D, down to M.
Okay. All right, then, I guess.
Just that I've seen, there's a ton of them on here that we've never seen before.
Okay. Do you want also item D? That looks like a submittal.
Yes.
All right. Okay, so why don't we have a motion then to, or is there anyone else? Anything else? No? Can, can someone make a motion to approve A, B, and C?
Motion to approve A, B, and C on the consent agenda.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. All right, why don't we go to item E, Mr. DiAgostino?
Yeah, this grant, unfortunately, we have learned that our application was not approved by the DOT at this time. Certainly, we will look to apply for this again.
DOT or DOE?
I thought it was a DOT.
DOT?
Department of Trans, yeah, it's DOT.
Transportation, okay.
Department of Transportation grant, but we'll certainly look to reapply when it comes around again, and, you know, hopefully have better luck with it next time. I do want to just take a minute, thank Mayor Carpenter, Representative Cronin, Cassidy, and Dubois for the letters of support that they submitted on our behalf in an effort to get our, our application approved, and, you know, they're always very supportive of everything we, we need them to be supportive of in the Brockton Public Schools, so I just wanted to thank them for their support on this, and hopefully we'll have better luck in the next time.
Okay. Anyone else on that one? His plan.
I'm just asking for clarification, so this was an authorization to submit, but we know that we did not receive it yet?
Apparently, Mr. DiAgostino said that it was submitted.
There was a deadline, and so it had to be submitted, or we, yeah, we were up against a deadline on it, but we have learned that it's already been, not approved this time, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, how about a motion then to remove item E from the agenda?
Motion to remove item E from the agenda.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Mr. Sullivan, why don't we take items N and O at this time?
Yes, I, normally, Tom, you would have done, you would have pulled these out because they're donations, and there are two donations, they're both small, but they're both going to Ward Seven, the Raymond School, and I just wanted to mention it because O is from the Ward Seven City Council, Shirley Azak. She donated over 100 carnations for Valentine's Day, and it was, it was a small cost to her, but the school ended up making a lot of money on that. The kids bought Valentines for their mothers and for the teachers, and it was a real good program, and it was kind of a last-minute thing that I was involved in as well, and Trilly came through, got the rose, she delivered the roses, I mean, the carnations and everything was a good time by all. And item N was a, a raffle ticket that was bought by a teacher at the Raymond School, and H&R Block donated a gift card plus $250 to the Raymond School, and I just wanted to mention it because every little bit counts, and I'd like to make a motion to approve item N and O.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? I appreciate you, Mr. Sullivan, pointing those out. We always want to appreciate and give a little credit to those who contribute to our students in the school system, so, you know, very generous of those people to do what they did, and I'm glad. I remember as a student, you know, purchasing carnations in, in the CAF, and, you know, you'd bring them home to your, to your mom, or, you know, if it was like when we were a little older, you might give them to a girlfriend or a girl that you were interested in, sort of as a Valentine's Day, you know, gift, but it was always a fun time to see them.
You were romantic.
Oh, yeah, I'm an old sock. I'm a lover, not a fighter, you know? So, well, I appreciate that, so, and thank you, Ms. Azak, and certainly, H&R Block. So, anyone else on that? Nothing further? All in favor? Aye. Wonderful. All right, thank you. And then, we have a number of, oh, sorry, we have a number of submittals. Do we have anyone that can speak about the BAR Foundation grant?
Well, I think what I'd like to do is address a couple of things that were brought up. You know, there are times that we run into a time crunch with authorization, and we're very careful about grants that we put in. Many times, we put things in two and three times with foundations, sometimes that's very difficult, but there's a larger reward for our district and our students, so we continue to work hard with our grants office. I will invite Karen Watts to come down, and, you know, we can certainly answer any questions. We're very excited, and I think you know that it doesn't matter if it's our support for students, Student Services Office, it doesn't matter if it's teaching and learning, our bilingual department, facilities, safe and supportive schools, so we apply for grants that make a difference for our kids in the district. And the other thing that I always think about, when you've been in the district 42 years, and you think back to those times, and I'm talking about after ed reform and a time, I always call it the mid-'90s, when we had more grants than we knew what to do, especially in one of the offices I worked in. So, I do see, you know, economic changes coming with grants that, you know, we, we went away, we didn't qualify for, the amounts are a little bit larger, and, you know, I'd like to really thank Karen and her office and all the support she gets from, she is a one-person office, but gets a lot of support from all of our administrators and teachers throughout the district. So, Karen, I, I don't know if there's any we want to address, I'd pull out the, certainly the BAR Foundation. If we just want to go through the list, and we can answer any questions?
Do you want to go right to BAR, the BAR Foundation?
Well, you have, we pulled out E, so, D, Safe Schools and Communities.
Safer Schools. Okay, so, first of all, let me just, well, good evening, and let me also say that there are folks here in the room that can probably, that absolutely helped to collaborate to prepare these proposals, so please chime in, you know who you are. First of all, Mike Thomas, we met today to pursue the Safer Schools and Communities Equipment and Technology Grant, and that grant was put out by the, the State's Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, and that will allow us to purchase equipment and technology to, to further secure our, the safety of our students and staff. And so, the part of the proposal there is to purchase door locks, additional door locks, and video surveillance equipment for the schools. So, we had a, a meeting with our Facilities Department, and we're pursuing that, and the allocation for large communities is $80,000, so that's the maximum that we can actually request. Any questions on that one? And then, the Safer Schools, we just talked about that one. So, the BAR Foundation, Engage New England, so we actually have Mrs. Wolder here, she'd like to speak with, on that, as well as, well, I think, I think it's just the two of us here. But basically, that has been, to Superintendent Smith's point, a reapplication, where we're actually pursuing the BAR Foundation's Doing High School Differently Initiative, and there, what we're doing is proposing to initiate a new high school, the PROMIS High School, and you can see the acronym there, to Raise the Bar on Student Achievement, and so what we're applying for here is a $150,000 one-year planning grant. This is a pretty large and significant undertaking to provide a pretty comprehensive system of new academic approaches. Part of the, the emphasis here is what they call a positive youth development approach, and also a whole, a comprehensive system of wraparound support services for the students. And so, that's, that's sort of give you the gist of that one. So, we're asking for a one-year planning grant to pursue that, and then if that is approved, then we would be eligible to apply for up to $750,000 to implement the new school.
So, we are at a point now where we had a conference call about a week ago, they wanted to talk to us before they made decisions on finalists. We were notified a day or two afterwards that Brockton is a finalist, and it will require extra effort on our part to describe, you know, our vision and the support of the school district and community to actually make this happen. So, as Karen said, you know, there's 150,000, you know, for a planning year, but also the intent is for a much larger grant, and we're not calling it an alternative pathway. It would be a, obviously, smaller, when you look at our 4,200-student high school, it, it could be up to, what, about 400 students?
Yes, that's, that's correct, right. That's true.
That was my next question, about how many students, you know, would be involved or possibly involved, so.
I know there's gonna be gradual ramp up of the number of students, maybe starting with 50, 40, 50 students, and then gradually increasing.
Now, the students, would it be students that their guidance council would recommend or a parent would recommend? Like, how would, how would the students be introduced to, you know, potentially entering this program? You know, what is sort of the, the bridge into it?
We're hoping that it would be a choice school, a school that students and parents and families would want to attend, and versus, you know, versus being placed, versus students being placed at the school. So, basically, very much of a choice, based on, like I said, that whole positive youth development theory and teacher engagement and, you know, well, not that teachers aren't already engaged, but teacher mentoring and having close relationships with students and more of a, a smaller student-to-teacher ratio, so, in order to facilitate that.
Great. Anyone else on, on the BAR grant? No? Okay, I guess, next one is the Innovation Pathways Final Designation.
Right, and we, I did, just, we've gotten some positive signals, Kathy, I know we talked about, you missed, there was a call that we played phone tag with Assistant Secretary of Career Education, and spoke with him this afternoon, and I think we're, we're very close in terms of being approved for this particular opportunity, to be approved as a State's Innovation Pathways Designee, and that's for our proposed Health Careers Pathway at Brockton High School, and as you can see, there's a pretty, there's, there's a team approach there with our Department Head of Career and Tech Ed, Kevin DePonte, and Jonathan Shapiro, and some others. And so, that opportunity, you know, it will be a four-year career development pathway where our students will be able to earn multiple types of credentials in the health career arena, so we're excited about that, and the initial funding for that is this $138,000, and part of that would, one of the things that the Assistant Secretary was saying is that they are looking for multiple funding sources, including private dollars, to fund this initiative, and they're looking down the road for this to actually be Chapter 70 funded, where it would allow for us to get a per-people funding support for this pathway. So, we're excited about this opportunity.
I think we all support, you know, these type of programs because it really, when you have a student that has a, a good sense of the direction they want to go early on, you know, in, in healthcare or nursing, you know, our nursing program is incredible, there's so many students that love it and, you know, go in that direction, but I, I think that when you have a student that really has a passion for the direction they want to go in something like this, really, I think enhances their high school years and focuses them on, you know, the path they want to go, and this, I think, gives them a leg up when it goes to applying to colleges and universities, because, you know, they see these type of programs on their, you know, on their transcripts, and they're like, okay, you know, this, this student's really motivated, so I, I can't say enough about the career-oriented programs, you know, it just seems like that's a, a great way to, you know, get students interested and give us that step up from, you know, other high schools. Anyone else on this one?
Mr. Golmey. Would that be Chapter 70 or Chapter 74, Marty? Because it sounds more like Chapter 74.
Well, he mentioned Chapter 7D, 7-0.
Okay.
Yeah, Chapter 74 is our traditional career and tech ed funding, but he mentioned Chapter 70 funding as well.
That's a different process to have programs approved under Chapter 74.
Right.
Interesting.
Okay, it looks like the next one is, submit a continuation application to the Corporation for National and Community Service for 29, 2019, 2010 AmeriCorps, state and national grants.
So, this is, this will be, this is our continuation application to fund us for year two of three of our AmeriCorps Early Literacy Project, and that is a project where we have, we were approved for being able to recruit 20 AmeriCorps volunteers, and actually, this is a national program, so it's a program where we can actually recruit members from across the US to serve in low-income communities, serving their country for a one-year period of time to help us to provide tutoring services for our students in, in grades K to three that are reading a year to year and a half behind grade, behind grade level, and, and so they receive a living, a modest living allowance, they're actually required to live at the, at the, at the level of poverty in the community where they are serving, and and a number of other supports. They receive, of course, the training and this research-based reading intervention, and they would, at the end of their service, be eligible for an end-of-service education award of what's called a Siegel, Siegel Education Award, to pay off student loans or pay for graduate school, that kind of thing. So, we're excited about being able to apply for that, and we were able to recruit eight members this past year, so hopefully we'll be able to gear, but we had a late start last year, so hopefully we'll be able to recruit more of our 20-person allotment this year.
Our hope was to actually bring them forward at some point to acknowledge the work that they've done in the district, so we just recently had conversation about that before we end the school year, and we will do that.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. DiAgostino?
First, I apologize. When we were speaking about item E, the other, the grant we didn't get, I neglected to thank Deputy Superintendent Thomas, as well as yourself, for the effort that both of you put into that as well, so I apologize for that omission. On this grant, there's a 24% match, it says we'll meet that through in-kind sources. Could you just describe for us what those in-kind sources consist of?
Yes, definitely. Basically, there are, there's, there's, there's basically man slash woman hours of our, our, our project directors. We have two project directors, Mrs. Julian, Dr. Julian Andrade, who's our coordinator of, of literacy, K to eight, I believe that's correct, and then Karen McCarthy, who's our coordinator of Title I services for the district. So, their time and in planning and coordination is a big part of that in-kind contribution, as well as some administrative staff time. We are required to provide healthcare, so because of the, the level of the stipend, many of the members have not asked us for healthcare, because in many instances, they're eligible for mass health, we, so we're providing healthcare for one member this year, but we are legally required to provide healthcare services for the volunteers as well.
And I would like to speak to the in-kind, you know, when you hear Dr. Julian Andrade and Karen McCarthy, you know, I want to make it clear that they have jobs in the district, and we continue to add, you heard Dr. Julian Andrade here when we talked about preschool. And we continue to add, you heard Dr. Julian Andrade here when we talked about preschool, and we added those duties and responsibilities. So I just want to give credit to people that are doing a full-time job. And when we say in-kind, it ends up being above and beyond, really to the point we talked about, taking a look at this program. If we were to enlarge the program, it ended up being, I, I think, more work than we thought, but the benefit to kids was wonderful. And it's a program that opens the doors for probably many other grant opportunities. So we do continue to look at those things, but it is just another thing that we've added on the plates of professionals that I'm not sure how they handle all they do.
Yeah, and I don't want to neglect to mention Jane Feroli, who is our specialist for parent engagement. She's been very closely involved with the, the AmeriCorps tutors as well in terms of their, sort of being their liaison, their point person. She meets with them once a month and has constant communication with them in, in order to just make sure that they, all of their needs are met and that they're getting an enriching experience for that, for their year of service.
Oh, great.
And the same thing for Jane. You know, again, another thing added on, and of course Jane is retiring in June.
Yes.
So, you know, these are people that, you know, again, go just above and beyond to, to support these programs.
Absolutely.
Well, and I'm glad I asked that because, again, I would like to thank all of those people for taking on the additional responsibility and giving us the additional time so that the program can be successful.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay. Next item, is it the teacher diversity pilot grant? Okay.
Do you want to speak to that, Karen, or would you like me to jump in? I, I didn't know if, I can't see, is Dr. Moran here? Okay, go ahead.
But I was going to say, yes, most certainly, please do speak to it, but it's, it's, yeah, please do.
So this is a grant that came about from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. There had been, you know, conference calls with urban superintendents, with districts looking to increase teacher diversity in the district. And, you know, it's not just a struggle in Brockton, it's a struggle throughout the state. So this is a program where you look at some of your sitting paraprofessionals. We, of course, have MTAs in the district who do actually have their bachelor's degrees, but many times the paras do not. So it's an opportunity, if the para is interested in seeking to go on to get a bachelor's degree, they could become licensed classroom teachers through the program called Journey Into Education and Teaching JET. And it would be for licensure, it's in-service professionals increasing racial and ethnic diversity by the Inspired Fellows. So the grant pays for assistance for program planning, tuition, MTEL exam fees. And again, it's something that we have been talking about, the Grow Your Own program. And at that point, we're talking about our own students. But we're well aware of many of our longtime or sometimes new employees who work in classrooms and sometimes the cost is just insurmountable for them to overcome while they're working, and this program is going to support that. Give them mentors, and it allows the district to work with Desi to make this happen. So this is new to us and we're excited about this opportunity.
Okay. Leadership, Leading Educational Access Program.
Okay, I don't know if Mrs. Wolder wants to speak to this, but this is what...
Adam J.
This is basically a program that the Department of Education released to help us with some ongoing work, the Diversity in Education Steering Committee, that's overseen by Mrs. Wolder, where they are going to be convening some trainings in cultural diversity and cultural proficiency. And so that, that will, this ten thousand dollars will help to support that, that effort to train teachers as part of the, well, initially to train administrators as part of the principals' academy, and then, then to support, then enabling them to support their respective staffs.
And that would be available to all levels, or is it high school?
All levels.
All levels, okay, good. Anyone on that item?
Yeah, and we did hear that we were approved for this one since this agenda item was written.
Oh, good, congratulations.
So we just were approved for that, so that's good.
So if we've been approved, when would we be able to sort of implement the program?
Very quickly, because the money has to be spent by June thirtieth.
We already are. Sharon has had a working committee.
No, August thirty, I'm sorry, August, because it's going to be summer training. I'm sorry, August thirty-first, sorry about that.
So this is, again, our second year, Sharon?
The diversity year is the second year. It'll be the second year of the training for principals. So this will support that work and the curriculum.
So this is the second year that we've provided training for principals and the diversity task force.
Good.
Curriculum.
Next one, we, we hear so much about STEM, Middle School STEM Grant.
Yeah, this was, this was an opportunity that actually the Mass Life Science Center approached the district. And having had a long history in working with MLSC on various initiatives to promote STEM learning in the district, they wanted to work hand-in-hand with us on a middle school STEM transformation and making certain that there's a good articulation between the middle school and high school transition that students have to make. So, so basically what happened was the, the team led by Jonathan and, Jonathan Shapiro and Michelle Connors basically interviewed commercially available programs and actually chose two curricular programs called Amplify Science and FOS, which is Full Option Science Systems. And these basically, these programs will help students to provide some hands-on learning opportunities and, you know, being able to focus on the process of science and gain scientific literacy skills. So, so we're excited about that funding opportunity, and they're hopeful that that will be something that we can, we can use going forward. Actually, this is, I should say, this is actually a multi-year opportunity. I didn't put that down here. So I think this is actually, I forgot the number of years, it's two or three years, because it's, it's, it's more than just a one-year opportunity, that's for sure.
When, when would the results come out in terms of who was chosen?
I think very, we'll find out very soon. I think in the next few weeks, we'll find out who's chosen on this one.
Let's cross our fingers on that.
Yeah, I think, I think we got a little bit of a wink and a nod today, but I think we're going to, I think this, we can, I think this is going to happen.
Get the nod.
I think it's going to happen.
Okay. That's, that's significant. Anyone on that item? Trauma-Informed Care for Young Children Grant?
So this one was one I was excited to work with Principal Joanne Camillo, who's really an expert in this field in terms of social, emotional learning. And she's done quite a bit of work in, in, over a number of years. And being the principal of the Barrett Russell Early Childhood Center, when this opportunity came out, I said, this is, you know, this was a great opportunity to pursue this work for young children. And I learned a lot about what her work there at the Barrett Russell, and it's, it's amazing. So basically, this will help us to provide, helping traumatized children learn trainings. That's, that'll be the key resource for the entire Barrett Russell staff and also being able to share that, these, this learning opportunity with local early childhood education providers in the, in the local area, including our local Head Start. And a lot of these, being the only early childhood special education provider in the Brockton area, this is a very, very special opportunity for, for this work.
Well, I think this is very worthwhile. I mean, unfortunately, too many of our children see too much too soon, too young.
Absolutely.
So any, any funding for these types of programs to help, you know, students and children when they're unfortunately witnessing things they shouldn't have to. Obviously, we're all in support of and cross our fingers that we get this type of funding too.
Again, this is a grant that it couldn't be in a better place than the Barrett Russell, as you said, with Principal Joanne Camillo, a former school adjustment counselor who's been involved in the trauma-sensitive work for many years. She is part of a chair of trauma-sensitive throughout the district. And also to bring in the community partners such as Head Start, you know, the children are coming to us within a year or two. So it really strengthens those students and the support that we provide for families, you know, through this grant.
Anyone else on that one? No? Okay. The next item is a request for a DECA, we didn't do that, did we? So that's what we did, too?
Yeah, by mistake.
You're forgiven, Mr. Sullivan. Okay, so how about we pull out, so I guess a motion then to approve items D, F, G, H, I, J, K, L. At the, for the submissions.
Correct.
I didn't make the, I'm asking for a motion. So someone needs to make the motion.
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve item D, E...
No.
A D, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, and M.
No, not M, L.
Not M. L.
You have a second on that. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, now we go to M, which is an approval of a BHS DECA out-of-state trip in Orlando, Florida.
I'd just like to make a motion to approve that, that was pulled off by mistake.
Okay. Someone want to second it?
Second.
Any further discussion? Do we need any discussion on this, Madam Superintendent, or...
No, we're just always proud of our DECA students that work very hard all year long. I had the opportunity last year to go and witness this competition in Boston with high schools all over the state. So we're very proud to be able to send two of our youngsters this year to the national conference in Orlando. I believe they're going April twenty-sixth to, I think, May first. So again, we're very proud to send students.
Isn't there some sort of a park in Orlando, Florida? It reminds me, especially Mr. Gormly, I think he loves that, that park. Yeah, something down there, okay. All right, so we have that motion. Did you make that motion? We have a second, this discussion, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, so that concludes the consent agenda. Communication, report of the superintendent of school.
Okay, good evening. First of all, I, you know, am so pleased to start with recognitions. And I have to tell you that, I tell you the best days are when I'm in the schools, seeing what's happening in our classrooms, meeting students, and students get very excited about not only the work they're doing, but I have to tell you about a couple of weeks ago, I happened to be at the Arnoan Elementary School, and Principal Proudhler had been telling me about three fifth-grade young women, and of course, this is Women's Month, March is National Women's Month. And she told me about these young girls who started what we call, and of course, it are known with the Tigers. So it was the Tiger Newsletter. And they go about gathering information, they speak to teachers, other students, and people get very excited about the publication that they're putting together. And I would like to invite them to come down with Principal Proudhler. I believe we have two of the three here this evening, Malia DeRosa and Sanchara Silvestri. And Cara Cersei is not here this evening, but I will be going to the Arnoan to, to certainly give her, her certificate. But Mrs. Proudhler, could you have them sit down and... So girls, you just have to press the button in front of that microphone so there's a green showing. So we have two greens. So could you tell us, like you told me when we spoke, you know, what made you start the newsletter at the Arnoan, and how has it gone over with the students and staff at the school?
So, over the summer, I was reading this book called Wendy's Choice, and it was about a girl who had to choose a decision between doing the school newsletter and ballet. And she chose doing the school newsletter because she loves to write, and so do I. And that's why I chose to start the school newsletter.
So you went to Principal Proudhler, and did you share your ideas with her?
Yes.
And, and how did it start? What did you do?
I joined with Sanchara, and Kiara joined with us, too.
And can you tell us a little bit about what it takes to develop a newsletter in a school?
So we usually start on Monday at one-thirty to two, and we go around asking teachers for, like, shout-outs for students or other staff members. And when we go to specialists, we ask for the good class, and we put it in the school newsletter and get it out by the end of the month.
So some of the things in here, and I'm sharing with everybody, they talk about, you know, family field trips, they talk about concerts coming up, they talk about things happening in a particular month. This happened to be the start of the new year. I love the shout-outs. So they comment on things happening in the school, and what's better than to get a shout-out telling you that you've done a good job? So guess what, girls? I'm giving you a shout-out tonight. So would you please come up and join me? We'd like to give you certificates, and please join me. Congratulations. Am I correct? So let's get you in the middle, we're going to take a picture. We'll put it right up on the website.
Girls, now very popular.
Principal Proudhler, we have to come with us?
Must be.
Thank you so much, girls. And the next recognition is a group that I became involved with. Actually, they've been in the district seven years, certainly my six years as superintendent. And it's a group that has gone really above and beyond for our students. I believe they are in the George School, the Angelo, the Raymond, and the Arnoan. I think it's about over eight hundred kindergarten students are receiving instruction in the arts, in music, and it's not your regular music class, it's not your regular art class. Children are involved, and it's, it's just very, very exciting. So I would like to actually invite up Ann Smith to come up and talk a little bit about the program.
I could sing about it instead.
That would be terrific.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. So this is our, our seventh year in the Brockton School District. I work for South Shore Conservatory, based in Hingham and Duxbury. I'm the Senior Director of Community Engagement, and my role is to bring what we do at the Conservatory out of the walls of our two campuses and into the community. So the Conservatory's mission is all about access. It's increasing access to the arts for everybody on the South Shore. And seven years ago, we came to the Brockton School District and we said, we'd really like to be a part of the energy and vitality of this community. What can we do to help? And initially, the idea was, well, maybe we can use music to address the vocabulary learning gap in kindergarten. And from there, working with literacy coaches like Claire Sheehan in the back and partner teachers like Principal Proudhler, we were able to develop a curriculum for a weekly arts-integrated literacy program that starts in October and goes every week for thirty-two weeks until the end of May. So it involves a weekly visit with an art specialist, monthly visits with music, visiting musicians who are teaching artists at the Conservatory who bring their bassoon, or their trombone, or their percussion, or their violin, and they share a story and they share their instrument. And that's once a week. Three times a year, we send home a book for, with every child. And so last spring, I think, we crossed the ten thousand bookmark for, for children in Brockton, ten thousand copies of children's books like Snowy Day and Bringing the Rain to Capiti Plain. We do family nights for all the families in the school, in the, these partner schools. And we do professional development for all the kindergarten teachers around bringing the arts in and integrating them into their academic subjects. Actually, on Thursday, we're doing our third and final PD of the year with the kindergarten teachers, all thirty-two kind, partner kindergarten teachers, and it's going to be about using music to teach science. So it's been a really wonderful partnership. It's an honor to be a part of all the good things that are going on in the Brockton schools and being a partner to all the teachers who are doing such good work here. And I'm grateful for the opportunity and for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight.
Well, thank you, Anne. And, you know, I had the opportunity a couple of years ago to come and thank your group, because I know it doesn't happen without funding philanthropy and people understanding the importance sometimes of seeing things their own children get, and making sure that children throughout our region have those same opportunities. So, you know, I know from having seen it in person, the excitement with the children when you're coming, I think it has made certainly our teachers better teachers, as far as being able to incorporate, you know, some of these opportunities, as you said, integrated into their classroom. So, thank you very much. I guess on, on behalf of everybody, we have a certificate. Please come up.
Yeah, can I just say one thing?
Please, sorry.
We certainly appreciate the partnership and the collaboration. Any way to get our students to have fun and learn, I think, you know, is, is, is a great, is a great solution to, you know, certainly literacy, literacy issues. But I, I think what you do, and what many of the other fortunate groups that we get to partnership with, you know, you give our students an opportunity to be exposed to things that, you know, they ordinarily wouldn't be. And, you know, you never know when in a child they get that little spark that stays with them, and they, you know, gravitate towards a certain interest, hobby, profession, talent, whatever it is, you know, whatever it is that happens with you and the program, or, you know, other groups that we're fortunate to have come in and partner with us, you know, expands that child's world, you know? And, and again, we certainly appreciate it, and we certainly welcome the future relationship. So, thanks so much.
Thank you. So let me just read this. Certificate of recognition presented by the Brockton School Committee to Imagine Arts in recognition of South Shore Conservatory's innovative and creative arts programming, now in its seventh year in the Brockton Public Schools, and the important contribution it has made to early literacy skills for our youngest students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Minicello. Next is the student report by Naomi Boskett. Naomi, take it away.
Good evening. On my, on the first on my list is the Drama Club, their production Magic Theaters made it to the state finals. Four students are going to the state finals in the science fair. The Boys Track 4x400 Relay Team made the Harrow All Scholarship Team. The Pops Concert is being held tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Parent-teacher conferences are this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Also, Thursday's a half-day, and dismissal will be at 11:00 AM. English MCAS is next week, Tuesday and Wednesday. Junior Prom is April 26th. Spring Sport Trial started on Monday, and tonight, the charity go- sorry. Guild, yeah. VHS Students Art Show was held in the Fine Arts Lobby today.
So lots going on.
A lot.
And when you hear Naomi talk about, I know our Magic Theater was actually performed in front of all our third-grade students here in Brockton, and we can't thank the students enough. Mr. Hogan, you know, all of the staff that, you know, put that together, because I heard the kids were mesmerized by it, loved it, and not only that, but they then came in first place in the regionals on Saturday. So we're very, very proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all on my list.
Okay. Thank you, Naomi. Next, I'd like to invite up for a technology presentation the Director of our Technology Department, Dan Vigent. And this is a really good time of year for Dan to come here. Hopefully, this year, he always has plenty to share with us, improvements or pushing out new devices, or, or things that we're doing. And every year during budget time, it becomes more and more difficult. So I think this is a good opportunity to see where, where we are actually at as a district, and what the priorities are.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so, technology. Once a year, I'm invited to come in front of everyone and talk about technology. This year, it was a very busy year, but also, we're in the home stretch of the one-to-one. So, with that being said, one-to-one, as everybody knows, hopefully, that is one computer for every child. What drives one-to-one, because we don't want to just buy technology for the sake of buying technology, is digital curriculum in the form of textbooks that replace textbooks, supplemental digital and online curriculum, and also digital citizenship, exposing the students to the internet in a safe and appropriate way. Also, online testing and assessments in the form of MCAS and WEDA. They've all been pushed online. This year, we did around 8,000, actually, 4,000 WEDA students tested already this year, and about 8,000 will be testing MCAS this year, all online. So, one-to-one, how did we get here? So usually, I just do a one-year overview, but this year it was important to actually look back at the last three years, because that's really when one-to-one began for Brockton in official capacity. In the late FY16, probably in May or June, we started officially embracing the one-to-one program, looking at purchasing significant amounts of computers each year, instead of the usual. What we normally would do was buy approximately about 1,500 computers a year, which sounds like a lot, but with a, a district of 18,000 students, or 17,000, give or take, this year, 1,500 computers wasn't gonna get us to a one-to-one anytime soon. So, in the last three years, we were able to purchase 9,000 student laptops, as well as sign every teacher a, a teacher laptop. That gave us a one, 9,000 student laptops, sounds like a lot, but that gave us a one-to-one in grades three through five only. While we didn't want to orphan the other grade levels, we did sprinkle around some, some laptops in all the other grade levels, but we weren't able to concentrate enough in grades three through five to create a formal one-to-one, every child has a laptop. This year, we're currently deploying another 3,300, give or take, student laptops. That will bring our one-to-one program into grades three through eight. And then next year, what that leaves is about 3,500 student laptops left to bring one-to-one in grades two through 12. So there's a distinction there, district-wide, one-to-one. It's really grades two through 12, grades K through, uh, K and 1. We don't necessarily need a one-to-one to accommodate all the curriculum needs at those grade levels. So we're really targeting two through 12. It'll need another 3,500 student laptops. So, the, the take-home message is, we've, we've done really well at purchasing a significant amount of laptops to get us to where we are, and 3,500 is a small portion of that, but it's still a significant amount of laptops. We're hoping to do that next year, if possible. That is not in my budget, so we would have to look at alternative funding sources. In years past, we've looked at grants, we've looked at leases. So we might have to do the same thing, depending on what our financial situation is in the next year or two. Just for reference point, 3,500 laptops, including the carts and provisioning and getting them set up and everything, that's about $1.4 million, if you want to put a price tag on what's left to get us to a one-to-one. Another thing with the one-to-one, before I continue with this slide, is we're trying to maintain a five-year lifecycle. So I've been here for 14 years, and in the first four or five years, when I first came on board, we didn't have a lifecycle. So a lifecycle is, how often do you refresh your equipment? And it's an important piece of the equation. When I first came here, there was no lifecycle, literally. When, when we started it, it was, we pegged it somewhere around eight years, and we were going out into the schools for the first time proactively recovering devices, and finding that they weren't even in use anymore. So that just gives you a, a real good indication of how important that lifecycle is. So we're trying for a five-year, which means in the next two years, the big batch that we purchased three years ago is gonna come up again. So it's not only important to look for money for capital expenditures to buy this equipment, but it's also important to understand that this isn't a one-time purchase. This is something that needs to be factored into the budget year over year, so we don't slip again. We have slipped, like I said, when I first came here, we went from an eight-year, and actually got it down to a five-year lifecycle. And then, all the budget, all the budget deficits happened over the last eight or nine years or so. We actually went back to an eight-year lifecycle, believe it or not. So we kind of lost all that ground. And now, we finally, in FY19, are getting it back again. So we're, we're aggressively trying to reach that five-year lifecycle again. So that's the one-to-one initiative. Besides deploying a, a lot of laptops, we're also doing login badges for grades K through 4. What that means is, I'm sure everybody's aware that we had a virus incident this year. We've had to increase what they call the complexity of passwords with staff and students, and for students at the lower grade levels, that's very difficult. So we brought in a program that allows the students to actually swipe a badge in front of the camera on the laptop, and it will log the student in with their credentials. We're doing that in grades K through 4, with the intent that in grade, in fifth grade, to prepare them for middle school, they're gonna have to start learning how to log, log in manually. So when they get to middle school, there won't be a learning curve, and the, and the middle schools will inherit those children already knowing how to log into their devices as an adult, if you will. The Microsoft 365 platform, we're still migrating. This has been a multi-year procession. The 365 is a cloud platform, just like Apple Cloud or Google, Google Docs and Chromebooks. It's just Microsoft's version of it. So, the whole world's migrating to the cloud. We are as well. It's more efficient, it's cost-saving in the long run, but it's a lot of work. We have a lot of students and a lot of teachers, and a lot of it is actually just more of a learning curve. To migrate 365, as far as my department's concerned, is a couple of checkmarks. The real, the real hurdle is actually training and retraining the students and the teachers. And there's a significant amount of students and teachers in this district, as everybody realizes, and we don't have a lot of staff for training, specifically for technology. So it's difficult to get that kind of initiative moving forward at the pace that we would like. In FY19, so, new phone system. If anybody's ever used a phone in this district, you'll quickly realize that, A, the phone system's older than me, and when I inherited it, I realized that there was no fixing it, we were gonna have to replace it. So, the last couple of years, we have a gentleman who's been migrating and upgrading the phones within the schools. And so what happens with a phone system is there's, there's two facets to a phone system. There's the phone system that's internal to the building, then there's your carrier. Okay? So, in order for us to change the carrier circuits, which is actually what's creating all the static on these windy, rainy days, we have to make sure all the buildings have the, have an updated phone system. So for two years, we've been going building by building and upgrading the internal phone system, and by this summer, we'll actually have all the schools ready to flip over to the new carrier. Now, phones aren't as, aren't as fancy anymore, or sexy of a topic anymore, as they were back in the day, but they're still an important and critical piece of communications in the system. So it's important that we maintain that phone system and invest in it where, where needed. Clocks, bells, and intercoms, they're in the exact same situation as the phones. A lot of the clocks and bells and intercoms in the district are probably older than us, and they're in, they're in dire need of being replaced. We've, we've fixed them as much as we can, we've put Band-Aids on, and we've kept, we've kept the ship afloat, if you will, but at some point, you gotta stop kicking the can and invest in some real infrastructure, because it's investing in your future, really. So we're doing a new phone system, we're doing new clocks, bells, intercom. Public safety, we were awarded a grant. You didn't see it on the Grants Tonight, because it was filed by the city on behalf of the school system. It was a public safety grant put out by the state that the city had to file for us. So we worked in conjunction with the city IT department, the school police department, the city police department, and the school IT department. We were awarded a $100,000 grant that's gonna go to the public safety network. The public safety, besides the surveillance equipment that Karen Watts spoke about earlier, it also involves a lot of infrastructure. So there's a lot of switches and routers and throughput to get all those cameras and other things that were passing through on the public safety network moving at an appropriate pace. So, we've taken that money, and we're gonna, we're gonna upgrade basically the capacity and the speed of that network, so you can continue to add devices onto that network. This year, we purchased 200 interactive projectors. So, we have about 1,000 classrooms in this district, give or take. There's about 500 classrooms that have full interactivity. So that means there's another 500 classrooms that probably have, not probably, they do have, the traditional projectors, kind of like what you see up there, just a little smaller, a little, a little cheaper, but. They're traditional projectors, there's no interactivity with them. So, what we've done, we've had enough money, we've had enough money this year to buy 200. We have 500 rooms that need them, so what I do is I pass, anytime I get any kind of capital improvements like that, that goes up to the curriculum teams, because I don't want to make any decision of where this equipment goes. This should be in the hands of the teachers, and the department heads, and the principals. So they identified 200 rooms with a strategy based around curriculum of where we're gonna take that. So, we can't accommodate all 500 rooms, but we're being strategic about where we're placing the other, the 200 that we're getting. Obviously, next year, we'll try to get some more projectors to eventually bring everybody up to interactive projectors in the classroom. This year, we upgraded, it's, it's all about, if you look at the thing, it's all about buying devices, and then making sure you have the backbone and the infrastructure to support it. It's all, it all goes hand-in-hand, you can't have one without the other. So we upgraded our internet circuits. We're running two, two-gig circuits, one here at the high school, and one here, and one at Central Administration Building, the Crosby Building. And both those circuits, actually, the high school circuit's dedicated to the high school, that's how much capacity the high school needs. The other two-gig circuit services the entire rest of the district. And then we had to build around all the network infrastructure to get there. So, from this device is the access point, from the access point is the switch, from the switch, the router, the router, the firewall, the firewall to the ISP. So you have all those hops, and it's just like a garden hose. If you, if you have a kink in it, or if you have a smaller garden hose and a larger garden hose, there's a bottleneck there. So you need to make sure all the pieces run at the same capacity. So 10G happens to be a bit of an industry standard right now. I'm sure in five years, and that from now, it'll be 20G or 40G, but right now, by the summer, we'll have all our hops, if you will, set up at 10G, and they're all going out those two, two-gig circuits, which is, which is adequate, if not, actually, a little bit more than adequate right now to service our needs. I've already worked with our ISPs to make sure that if next year we need to increase the bandwidth, we're buying all the right equipment that is literally just a phone call and a bump up in price. But all the infrastructure will be in place to support capacity growth in the future. So with, with 18,000 computers versus 7,000 computers, which is what we supported just a few years ago, our work orders and our technicians have seen an increase year over year, and this year, we're, we're definitely actually easily going to break 10,000 work orders a year. So that's 10,000 formal workers that get created for our technicians to go out and fix stuff. That actually doesn't take into account, a lot of my senior staff work on projects, which we don't really count with work orders, because it just doesn't, doesn't play well with work, with a work order system. But those 10,000 work orders are actual work orders given to a technician to go service requests. Could be hardware, could be software, could be just helping an end-user. That number also doesn't accommodate, I have a little bit of an informal rule with my technicians, that everything they do needs a work order, but if they're out in the schools, and some, if a teacher or a student grabs you, and they need something like, you know, the numlocke is stuck on, or something like that, and that's where their password doesn't work, we don't need to create a work order for that. But just to, but that's still work, that's still tangible work that the technicians have to do, but just to let you know, that 10,000 number doesn't even account for, for th- those calls as well. So, we're, we're handling quite a few calls this year. Every summer, we have a project. A lot of times, we're upgrading OSs, or we're upgrading Office, or we're doing some kind of project. A lot of times, every year, summer, we actually use student interns to, to help us out with that. This year, we're gonna be decommissioning all our Windows 7 devices. They're mostly in the form of the older desktops, which is fine, because we're going to laptops anyway. But decommissioning Windows 7 devices, there's, I wanna say about 4,000 Windows 7 devices we have to, we have to decommission. So, there's no small, there's no small projects anymore. When I first came on board, the whole district was 3,500 computers. Now, in a year, we're making up projects that we're, we're doing 4,000, 5,000 devices at a time. So there's been quite a bit of changes in the last five, four, or five years. FY19, I spoke about it for a second earlier. We did have a virus incident. It was a pretty significant incident. My background just happens to be an antivirus and a different life. I was a systems analyst at Titleist, actually, and I implemented one of the largest antivirus implementations at that time, and then was recruited by EMC to go do the same thing. I actually turned the EMC job down, but I know a lot about viruses. One of the reasons why I turned down the job at EMC is because I don't like viruses, and I didn't want to try to remediate viruses for the rest of my life. It's very stressful. It's very stressful. Fortunately, we've had very few virus outbreaks in Brockton, but this year was an exception and we did get hit. This year in particular, and particularly this year, the country actually got hit. I don't know if you've caught it on the news or reading between the lines, but with this virus, it was substantial enough that it gained the attention of the FBI. So I have four FBI agents dedicated to my case that I can talk to and they call me periodically and work on. I have some of the top engineers in our antivirus company working with me. I have four different vendors all working on this project, if you will. So the virus outbreak, it started around November, as far as we can tell, it started November 16th. And we were alerted to it, my guess is within an hour or two of actually happening. And that actually saved quite a bit of the impact because between the FBI and the virus companies, they were surprised that the impact or the payload of the virus wasn't as substantial as the intrusion. The intrusion was substantial, but we really dodged the bullet, if you will. The first day, within the first couple of hours of identifying that we had a real serious virus situation on our hands, we, we immediately implemented our virus tactic remediations, which is things like immediately change all the passwords, disable accounts. There's, there's a whole protocol and some of them I can't really get into because it exposes what we do in terms of, in terms of remediation, which could compromise future, future attacks. But we, we responded very quickly that day and I think it prevented any kind of significant damage. We did incur time, basically, as a, as a damage. By November 19th, we saw about 4,000 devices were compromised. By November 27th, 7,500 devices in total were compromised, but by then, we'd already cleaned up several thousand computers. We prioritized, we did central administration, payroll, HR, facilities, main offices in the schools. So out of 7,500 devices and literally thousands of accounts compromised, we did not lose a single day of school and we did not lose a single day of work, which honestly was a miracle in itself. We had vendors telling us that we were probably going to be down for weeks when they saw the initial intrusion and me and my department said, that's, that's not acceptable and, and we did everything we could to keep everything running. The cleanup, like I said, the first day we started, we, we knew right away that we were dealing with something more than just the average everyday virus. With 18,000 computers, we deal with viruses every day and we have for 14 years, but this one, this one was significant and different. So November 25th, yeah, we had all critical systems cleaned, passwords reset. By the 19th, we had just about all the staff devices cleaned and passwords reset. January 10th, we started with the lap, we were actually closing in on all the laptops for the students being cleaned. The older student desktops, we're just decommissioning. We're not going to spend the time and money cleaning them. We were, we were already in the process of purchasing those 3,000 laptops, which we're going to go replace the desktops anyway. So I merged the two projects. So we were cleaning viruses and replacing equipment at the same time so we didn't have to clean just to replace several weeks later anyway. And then, and then the virus remediation, while we had some extra staff on hand, we went right into prepping for WITA because it, because we had lost literally two months of time with what my department typically does just on day-to-day activities. So I had to try to accommodate and, and try to recover some time that we had lost. So I started blending some projects in and using some of the temp help that we had to bring in to help remediate the virus. We kept them on for a couple more weeks, basically. And I said, you know what, while we have everybody here, let's start doing the WITA prep because then after the WITA prep is MCAS prep. It's, it's like our whole year is already planned ahead of time. There is no downtime for IT anymore. So that's it. We're still cleaning. Every, every day, we, we have substantial amounts of additional layers of security implemented during the course of the virus remediation. So we have a lot of alert systems and every day, we get alerted, there's one device here, one device there. So we've gone from 7,500 devices infected to one or two here or there and with 18,000 devices, the unfortunate fact is there's always a device in a nook and cranny of one of these schools that might not even been turned on for the last couple of months. So it never threw a report and then all of a sudden, somebody uses that laptop or somebody uses that desktop. So we'll get these reports. So we're always on high alert. We haven't been off high alert in four months. It's actually been pretty exhausting, but it's, it is a day by day. The other day, our report was literally one device that day, which was awesome. My department and I had a, had a good hooray after that one. The next day, it was three more devices, but, but we, we are getting it down to the onesies twosies, which is, which is where we want to be eventually. It's going to be 100% gone, but that's what you get with a virus intrusion. You get a bit of a spotlight on you with the hacking community and everything once, once they've, they've got in there a little bit. So you get a little bit of extra attention, but you know, my department worked very hard on, on making sure that this system stayed up every single day and I can't, I can't overstate how much effort was put in to make sure that happened. So we talked about hardware and software and everything, but really, it comes down to people. It's, it's the teachers and the students and the admins that have to use technology effectively. And it's the support staff that has to make sure that not just the hardware works or the software's installed, but the user's actually using it effectively. So it's all, it's all about people, really. It's, it's not about hardware and software. So tech services, just to give everybody the big picture, in the upper right-hand corner, you have what the state recommends, one tech for every 400 devices. And if you look at the bottom of the screen, we're about one tech for every 1,000 devices. Five-year life cycle, like I mentioned earlier, that's what we, that's what we're striving for again and hopefully we'll stay there. One by one, one-to-one for, by 2015, obviously, we're behind on that. That's why it was very critical, even in the face of budget deficits, that we start purchasing devices for these students. A lot of other districts went one-to-one by 2015 and like it was mentioned here earlier by some speakers, you know, we don't want to be the have-nots. So we got to make sure that we're keeping up with industry standards in other districts. We want to be competitive. So it means making an investment in these devices and then using them effectively. And then one instructional tech per 120 teachers. So the one tech for 400 devices is to make sure your hardware and software is running properly and you're supporting the staff. The one instructional tech, that's more the instructional technology department with Kevin DePont, but his department really needs to be beefed up because one instructional tech per 120 teachers, I think there's literally Kevin in his department with instructional technology and we have 1,500 teachers. So that would be the ratio for that. So not to, not to advocate for a different department than my own, but we're all kind of in it together and if one part of technology doesn't work properly, we, we all lose. So it's important that, you know, we bring these ratios up to some kind of realistic level to make sure that we are supporting, once again, not the computers and not the software, actually supporting the teachers and the students. Because without that support, they're, they're going to struggle. And that is my technology report for this year. Any questions?
Dan, has anyone ever held accountable for any of these viruses? I mean, do they find the people, groups or individuals?
So the FBI, the FBI's main capacity in this incident was actually fact and data gathering. Unfortunately, they didn't offer a lot of help and I'm not trying to, trying to beat up on the FBI or anything, but they didn't offer a lot of help in the terms of technical expertise. What they did was they asked a lot of questions. They were, and I'm not trying to float our own boat or anything, I think they were pretty impressed with how we responded, how quickly we responded. But one of the things they're having me do is gather what I'm calling a fraud report. So with this incident, unfortunately, there were some staff that had some personal accounts compromised. So I've gathered all that data, bringing it to, we're bringing it to the FBI. The FBI has actually named me as Ann Brockton in a federal complaint that they're going to try to go after what they call the bad actors. They've narrowed it down and I can't talk too much about this, but we've, we actually saw it before they even said it. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm just, I'm just explaining something that we've witnessed. The original incident was very significant and it did come out of Russia. And there was a secondary attack shortly after that that came out of Kazakhstan. So the FBI obviously is very interested in, in those kind of attacks. What I was told by our antivirus company is that these kind of attacks have been escalating over the last 12 months. They're pretty substantial now, they're across the country. They've, if you, you can Google tonight and just read hacking and you'll find that between China and Russia and North Korea, they're going after our companies, they're going after municipalities, they're going after infrastructure, they're going after trade secrets. So it, it is a bit of a, an international, a national or international incident and they want to gather that information and they've, they've named us in, in one of their, one of their complaints or files.
And what makes, like what makes a virus, you know, worse significantly?
So this virus, rumor has it, that this virus was created by a government entity and the sophistication and complexity is something that you would probably only find in a state-sponsored type virus like this. The, the amount of variants, the amount of times it split and morphed was, was actually pretty fascinating and impressive on a technical level and how fast and quickly it went through our system. So this was, according to our antivirus company, one of the most sophisticated viruses in the world right now. And that says a lot because I'm, I'm, I think there's like 200 million viruses out there. So this was, this was one of the biggest, baddest viruses out there. I don't think it targeted Brockton specifically. I think it targeted the US and I think a lot of places got hit that you may or may not ever hear about, but we were, we were one of them, unfortunately. You know, and then, like I said, I think how quickly we responded because I, I'm here, I can't relay some of these stories because I'm, I, I got them in, in confidence, if you will, from some of the organizations that I've been dealing with. But even with our antivirus company, they put me in touch with their direct engineers out of the UK, some engineers out of Israel, the FBI. I wasn't assigned one agent, I was assigned the cybersecurity agent out of Boston, two special agents out of Seattle. It was, it was a significant event at, at all levels. And like I said, to be honest and not to float our own boat, everybody was surprised that the, the damage was very minimal. And they did, they did attribute that to how quickly we were able to respond, change what they call elevated privileged passwords. So we don't necessarily have to change a teacher or student's password because they, they can only harm themselves, if you will. And I know that sounds bad, but you're always trying to minimize damage. It's the elevated privileges of my department, really. And then there's a few other staff members that you call power users. They have privileges that can affect other devices, other pieces of software, other data. So the quicker you can respond and change those accounts, the, you, you really minimize your damage. And that's, that's, I think, how we kind of dodged the bullet.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Mr. Gormly.
Thanks for your presentation, Dan. Just an insight into one-to-one devices, this is my second year teaching with one-to-one devices. So if we end up in the situation where we have students bringing them home, I'd recommend middle school students on down, don't do that.
Yeah.
Because it's a big issue we're running into in year two is they're forgetting them, they're getting stolen.
Yep.
And they're not being charged. So that's just something I wanted to throw out there is you don't always know how it's going to turn out.
Right.
We weren't sure what was going to happen because they're all iPads.
Right.
But I've bought like 15 chargers because students don't charge them in the morning and night, like they're supposed to and follow protocol. So that was one thing. And I know you put up, it's a rough estimate or just a broad number, but I'd like to see a little bit more detailed numbers of what you need to function properly and what you have now. Because we've cut this a lot and as we're going forward into MCAS being online for the second year, I think it's more, we've talked about this as a committee, you know, how important it is, we have to really start investing in that. It's probably, we're so far behind on that that I think we need to see where we need to be.
Yeah. I have, I actually have proposals, Superintendent Smith's had me make up several proposals. Her and I have done a little bit of campaigning with some organizations and, and City Hall and everything to get additional funding. Because, I mean, in the face of budget deficits, how do you grow? It's a bit of a paradox. So you do have to look for those alternative funding methods. So we do, I do have proposals actually on hand that I can provide everyone, I believe.
And, and we continue to, you know, to Mayor Credit, excuse me, credit to Mayor Cappenter. He, at the end of the year, asked if, you know, to take a look at some of the things that we were requesting for one-to-one for technology. I don't think things are finalized yet. We've been before the city council every year, you're there with us in June when we show them the significance. It's one thing about the funding of Chapter 70, it's another thing for the city to take ownership for things our kids need. And there are plenty of districts looking at, you can call it what you want, floating a bond, debt exclusion, but these are things our kids need. When you heard the parent talk today about 21st century skills and 21st century curriculum. And we have been cutting for the past four or five years and I give us credit because the little changes that are coming is because we are out there advocating for those changes for, and will continue to do that for our kids. But we have got to make a decision as a community. It cannot wait.
Mr. D'Agostino.
Kind of piggybacking off of Mr. Gormly a little bit, I wanted to ask, so in 2013, you had a ratio of 1 to 538. We're at 1 to 1,000. Can you, I mean, can you effectively maintain and keep running the device, keep the devices running and operating at that or what ratio is, I mean, budget notwithstanding, of course, but what, what is the ratio that's a little more, that's reasonable where we could expect devices to be in good working order?
So one to, obviously, the state's recommendation of 1 to 400 would be great. 1 to 500, 1 to 600 is, is probably reasonable, like you said, given, you know, our budgetary situation. 1 to 600 would, it, it puts a lot more time into the schools. We're trying to be at the schools more and, and, and like I said earlier, it's not just about hardware and software, it's really about working with students and teachers and making sure that they're having a good experience with the device. And that takes time and, and that's, that's the biggest piece to it, is fixing a, fixing a computer or installing software is actually relatively quick. But it's actually making sure the user is using it effectively, they know how to use it. That's, that's where like all the magic happens, but it's also where it becomes very time-intensive and labor-intensive. So having the instructional tech, technology, teachers alongside technicians, you want, you want that one-two punch. So, you know, in my department, I need, I definitely need two or three more technical people, like an entry-level tech and two senior techs. The senior becomes important because as you, as you have 18,000 devices, your options of going out and just throwing labor at it and going visiting devices, it kind of goes out the window with a lot of projects. If you're not doing it smartly in the backend and pushing stuff out with your network engineers, pushing a lot of that stuff out and not relying so much on your field techs for that kind of stuff, that's where you can start getting that economy of scale and you don't have to get down to 100, 1 to 400. So that's why I would say I would need another field tech, but I really also need senior techs to start reducing that, that overhead of having the field techs out there manually doing everything. And then, like I said, that one-two punch, that second punch is really getting folks in the schools that are technical, but also more in tune with the curriculum to actually work with teachers and the students to, to make it effectively. Because that's when that magic happens and that's when student performance will go up. That's when, you know, testing and, and the usage of the equipment just seems seamless. You know, the technology shouldn't be a hurdle or an obstacle or, or something to dread when you, when you approach it. It's supposed to be helping you, it's supposed to be reducing overhead. And if you don't have all those pieces together, technology can be actually counterintuitive with to what you're actually trying to accomplish. So you need, you need both those, those pieces of the pie.
And I, I hate to, or I apologize if I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but roughly, obviously, I don't expect exactly, but approximately those three extra people, what would the cost of that be? Any idea at all, just a rough guesstimate?
I mean, real rough, I would say three people, 200,000, 220,000 for salary, not including benefits and whatever else.
Right. Okay. So that's just salary plus benefits. Yeah. I mean, and, and, I mean, this is an important issue, if you think about it, any, if we have- Any, if we have kids coming out of high school or, you know, that aren't proficient with these devices, they're not, that's going to spill over to college success, that's going to into career.
Right.
I mean, can you imagine not being proficient with technology today?
It's not just proficiency, remember, they're taking their high school, a high-stakes test online.
Right. Yes. And that is a good point. I mean, we've gotten a lot better at it and in the last three years, we've made a substantial investment and we've, we've used strategy to put them towards where we're doing MCAS testing and weighted testing. Because the last thing you want to do is you're taking a test that has importance, like a high-stakes test like MCAS. The last thing you want to do is put a student in front of a computer that's only had to use that three or four times a year.
Right.
You know, because then they're not just taking the test, now they're actually like battling with technology. Because, you know, the way MCAS does, there's a special graphing calculator, there's a lot of little nuances to even the test itself that if they're not overly familiar with, that's going to affect their grade performance. So even if the student knew what they were doing, you could actually have a lower grade performance because of technical problems. And not necessarily technical problems like the computer's not working, but more proficiency, familiarity, exposure. So you want those students, that's why one-to-one versus a one-to-many is so important. You want that student to have that device. So that device, we know it works every day because that student uses it every day and the day of the test is no different than the day before. So if the student was using that device and it's working properly, the day of the test, it's, it's working properly. In a one-to-many, these devices are being shared, the day of the test, everybody's scrambling, grabbing laptops, praying they're all going to work when they turn them on, that kind of thing. So it's, it's a bit of a chaos thing. Now fortunately, grades three through eight, now we're getting into the one-to-one and we're seeing exactly what we already speculated was going to happen. We're having better results. We're having not that, that anxious anxiety deer in the headlights look from the teacher, you know, when it's, it's like come time for test day and oh my God, we're going to do this on a computer. You know, so that, that exposure and that proficiency, that, I mean, that's one of the reasons why in the first purchase of the laptops, we made sure the teachers got one, even though they already had a desktop. Because the teacher, actually, if you think about what a teacher's role is now besides teaching, they have to be like a little mini technician for the students. They're in a classroom with 30 kids, there's a laptop. That's a small business in every single classroom. That teacher has to support that at some level, you know, they can't just rely on us all the time. So that, it is important to have that, that exposure and that familiarity and that, and that one-to-one environment. And we, and we have already looked at bringing it home and the high school did a pilot, actually, I think we're in the second year of the pilot, I think it was 200-plus students doing the, bring it to home. Because we need, we wanted to see, is the break rate going to go up? Is the theft rate going to go up? Is, you know, we needed to look at those things and then I'm going to take that, aggregate it, and then give it to the business manager and they can figure out how much more money we would need to support bringing it home. Because ultimately, especially with our student population, we need them to bring it home. You know, these are the kids that might not have it at home. So it's almost more important, if not, it definitely is more important for them to bring it home. So we have to learn how to accommodate that need.
Thank you.
I'm so glad you're here this evening and I thank Brett for reminding me. So I have a seventh grader and she came home yesterday and said, I have a complaint. I said, well, what is that? We have one-on-one devices now. And I asked, well, how is that a complaint? Well, we can't bring them home. So, so to answer Brett, well, that's apparently right now, we're, we're not allowing them to bring home and that certainly seems for many reasons to be, you know, reasonable. But as you said, we do feel that a lot of these students probably need it because many of our students aren't going home to their own one-on-one device in the evening. And if we have homework assigned, we want to be able to carry that over. This is going to save some money when we talk about paper and textbooks if we're using this technology. So I think that does become a tricky topic.
Yes.
That we need to, you know, kind of explore.
Yeah. One way or the other, we're going to figure it out. I mean, and we're going to, you know, we try to think outside the box, you know, especially with, I mean, if funding was no, it was no obstacle, then we wouldn't even be having this conversation, but it is. So, you know, for instance, the devices in a couple of years is going to be coming out of that five-year lifecycle. Now, it's not necessarily means we need to throw them away. They probably have a year or two left in them if you're going to do remedial purposes with them, not to use every day as a one-to-one in a classroom. But when they come out of the five-year lifecycle and we have to refresh that, well, we're going to have thousands of laptops. So some of the things we're talking about and discussing and trying to vet out all the logistics of is, well, maybe they bring those home. Because there's not a significant amount of cost if it's lost or damaged or, or whatever. So we're, we're trying to think out of the box and how do we can accommodate, even if we phase things in and eventually get to the time where, yeah, that device is also the device they take home. But we're also looking at, whoa, we're going to have some laptops coming out of commission that we don't necessarily want in our day-to-day environment, but we could, we could actually use them for bring-home purposes. You know, and I mean, it could be something like the old library, like when you take out a book, you know, all right, well, we'll convert all our libraries to 21st century skills and now you take out a laptop to bring home if you need it. If you, if you don't need a laptop at home, that's great, you don't have to take one out. That saves more for the kids that do because we might not have all the laptops. We need to accommodate every single student, but maybe we don't have to accommodate every single student. So we are looking at, we are looking at things like that and I think it's going to happen sooner than later.
You just gave me another idea. Perhaps if our libraries have these devices and if students can maybe stay after school a little bit, of course, they can also do that at a library, but if they're also already at the school and we do have some of those older devices available in our library spaces, then maybe they could even, you know, have access to those right after school for a little bit.
Right.
Maybe do some of that work that, because they don't have that device to go home to.
Right. Exactly. So in the next couple of years, I think there's going to be a shift and we're going to have some availability that we're going to figure out what to do with. Right now, we're just trying to build the capacity of, of the one-to-one, but it's, it's going to come sooner than, sooner than we all think, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, some of my questions were already answered, but thank you for the presentation. Now, one of my questions is, is I know we lease some of the devices. So is it more cost-effective to lease them, given the lifecycle, where we will have a lot of laptops on hand, you know, years down the road? Because we're going to have to keep renewing, we're going to have to keep updating them. So is it worth it for us to purchase them or is it better to lease them?
So leasing actually is a bit of a wash. So leasing is just a vehicle to amortize the cost of these laptops. So we could have never bought, I forgot what the first lease was, like six or 7,000 devices. We could have never bought that in year one because that was $2.5 million when that budget was probably cut that year. So at least we had to amortize that. So instead of coming up with $2.5 million to get this show on the road, we came up with $500,000 a year, which is what the lease cost. I think it was like $550,000 a year. Now, the benefit of the lease is that cost then gets factored into your budget. So it's not a one-and-done, people can forget about it, that kind of thing. That cost is, so I have a cost in my budget, $550,000 a year. It's the one and only lease we did, but it's a bit of a comfort factor for me because I know that's just, that does not get taken away. And what I'd like to see is actually three leases, because I don't want to have to replace 18,000 computers in one year because that would be very difficult. What I'd like to see is three leases, third, 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 and then that 500,000 turns into, say, a million and a half, but it's not $7 million every five years. It's a million and a half every year, which I think is probably more manageable from the, from the business manager's standpoint. It lets me plan because it's very difficult to do year-by-year purchases because you never know, you know, you know, public sector, and I came from the private sector, so I had to get used to public sector's short-term planning. And I understand the need for it because you never know what you're going to get next year, so you've got to plan for that year. That's a very difficult way to plan. I, I like to plan like five years out, but you, you're really, it's tough to do that in a government environment. But a lease kind of enables that a little bit, so you can plan around your, your capacity. You know that's going to be there every year. So I like the lease. In terms of costs, it is a bit of a wash. I mean, the interest rates are really low. My guess is, I want to say it was like 1, 1.4%, something like that was the least, was, was the least. So it wasn't, wasn't too bad of a finance charge, but that would be the cost difference. So when you buy a laptop, a $350 laptop is a $350 laptop, whether you purchase it or lease it. The only cost difference is the financing. So Superintendent Smith mentioned bonds, maybe we can do zero percents. You know, somehow we're going to incur the cost. It's really how you amortize that and what the finance rate is that tells you, well, how much more is it than just to buy it outright? But I do like the lease and I do like the third, 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 because it's just easier to plan around. It's easier for it to say, all right, every, every two years, we're going to be removing this amount, putting this amount in, but the budget stays the same.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
Nice presentation, Dan.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask on that, the virus that hit in November. What I'm trying to find out is, was there anything done to prevent it from happening again?
Yes. There's a lot done. There's a lot done. It was funny, I had about four slides for the virus presentation and I had to take most of them out because I started realizing I was creating a blueprint for how to attack us again. But we, we invested a significant amount of money and now we're going to do into training and to talk about bringing in senior staff. That's one of the reasons, is because some of the antivirus security systems that we have in place now are, are systems that you would see at banks and hospitals because we're being targeted, unfortunately, like banks and hospitals are. We went from, just to give you an example, or to put it in some kind of perspective, I think my antivirus budget was probably hovering around $80,000 a year. As renewals, and don't get me wrong, renewals can be a little cheaper than the upfront costs, but we, we've invested already in about $400,000 in new antivirus security. And there, it's, it's no longer just one program that protects you from virus. It's literally like five layers of antivirus and it's, it's very complex and it's very sophisticated, but if they break through here, they can't get through here. It's, it's a pretty wild system to develop and create. I'm, I'm actually pretty familiar with some of these systems already from, like I said, a former life. I didn't really think we'd ever have to bring them into a K through 12 organization like this, but we are. And that unfortunately, not only is the cost of the software, but it is the cost of managing it. Because these are not set-it-and-forget-its. I mean, my full-time job this last four months has been putting on my engineering hat that I haven't worn in 10 years and actually configuring right with my network admins and my senior techs, configuring this stuff, maintaining it every single day I'm in the antivirus systems. We've gone through four days of training, two-day seminars. I need to probably do another two more weeks of training with my senior staff just to get them familiar with the systems we've already purchased. So it's, it's a substantial investment. You know, I'll, I'll talk about one cool thing. I really can't talk about too much stuff, but something that I never thought we'd need is geofencing. Nobody from outside the country can log into our accounts. We know if someone in Syria is logging into our account right now. We know if someone in Russia is logging into our account right now. Those are the kind of things that I never thought we would ever need to put into place like this, but, but we have them. And we have far more advanced stuff than, than that, but I really can't talk too much about it.
Just one final question. You had mentioned decommissioning Windows 7 computers. Was that because of the virus or?
No. Microsoft, Microsoft's decommissioning Windows 7. I like Windows 7. Microsoft's doing away with Windows 7 at the end of this year. Actually, I think it's like February of 2020, but they're, they're decommissioning it, so we need to decommission it. We were already in the process of decommissioning. All the new devices are Windows 10. So a lot of the, a lot of the Windows 7 devices are our old desktops. When the laptop project is over at the end of the day, say, two years from now, all students and staff will just have laptops. I'm sorry, all students and teachers will just have laptops. Admin, staff, like myself and probably most people in the bill, in the room here, they will keep their desktops. Now, when I say desktop, it's a, it's a different, different physical platform or footprint, if you will, the desktops that we're using now versus the desktops that we're buying now. So even the desktops are practically little mini laptops that we just literally slap on the back of a monitor and it has as much horsepower as a desktop this big from three years ago. But the desktops will be admin, probably only administrative staff, laptops will be teachers and students. They'll always, they'll all be Windows 10 and then when Microsoft decides to stop doing security updates for Windows 10, we'll move on to whatever operating system.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
You're welcome.
We'll continue to update you. Obviously, technology is a priority. It's always been a priority and you can see the complexities and the importance it is for kids. I am going to, we've spent quite a bit of time on technology. We did have a curriculum update. I'm going to wait till the next time, but I will tell you as far as the turnaround schools go. I just, this past week, attended a session with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education there with our three middle schools right here at Brockton High School. I can't tell you, I was thrilled being in the classroom with a whiteboard that had so much black marker on it, it didn't look like a whiteboard anymore. I know the deputy is working very hard pulling up rugs as we speak. We don't have the money to put tiles down, we're looking to, to put a kind of cement down, but these classrooms are outdated. And when you heard the parents speak to you tonight, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here, you know, but it was really interesting to have the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed in there and looking at our teachers working very hard on their turnaround plans, on their visioning, and I have great faith that we will, we will move forward. But it's just a stark reality when you're in those rooms and you're looking at what we're dealing with in the district. That's not, I didn't want to get off on that, but I will in April have an update for you. You've got groups meeting, schools meeting on weekends. A lot of time is being spent on the visioning and moving the process forward along with support from Chief Academic Officer June Saban-McGuire, Dr. Cancel, and many members on their teams. So I also will tell you today, and I'm going to try to be very quick here, I know the night is long and people have had long days. I actually, I'll jump into advocacy and then talk about what happened today, but advocacy last night, many of you were there. I don't even know what the estimate was. You probably might have a better idea than I did because I've been out of the district all day at a conference with the Commissioner of Education today. But we had a large number of parents for a very quick phone call and an update that, you know, Vice Chair Minichello had talked about wanting to get parents there so they could hear what we're dealing with, with advocacy. On the 22nd, on Friday, I am part of a panel of gateway superintendents. The mayor is part of a panel of gateway mayors. Aldo Petronio will be joining me, as he always does, to state our case with three-minute testimony and answering the questions about the impact this is having on our district and why equity in education has to happen now. So I was very pleased. The one thing I can tell you from seeing the parents there last evening is they need direction. This is not something that they're going to be able to do alone. And that needs to be the next step. You know, do we look at all wards across the city and start to develop a strong group of families, parents, community advocates, that really start to meet on a regular basis and they start letting their voices be heard? Because that's your grassroots operation. We also have, I believe, a team coming to visit us with our state legislators inviting them here on Monday, the 25th. We will take a look at conditions and basically, we always visit Brockton High School because we have one large high school. But I could take visitors to any of the schools in the Brockton Public Schools and look at some of the stresses on our budget. So we continue with the advocacy. We will be at every event we can possibly be at. When I left the meeting last night, I headed today to UMass Amherst with the first-ever, the commissioner, Commissioner Jeff Riley, put together its Keros, Mapping Our Way Forward. And it involved teams from many districts, many nonprofits, people involved in the educational realm. Dr. Cancel joined me there. I was thrilled to be joined by Sean Desmond, our Assistant Dean from the Azure House, who is an alum of UMass Amherst, and two of our students. I had Mantia Gonkala, who is the senior class president right now, and Alexander Yunis, who is the niece of Joyce Azak and the daughter of Shirley Azak. And they were our student representatives at a day of visioning, looking what education looks like for years ahead. And I've asked them to actually come at some point and present about what the day was. So again, we, we were represented well there. I think I'm going to jump into, it's interesting when you start to look at the good things happening around the district and they get to be so many. I've decided, and it's great that I decide this at the end, that I'm putting it to pictures and I'm hoping this time, and I will talk probably very quickly, unlike last time when I couldn't keep up, I'm going to really race through this. So June, will you come and help me do the pictures? And I want to show you some of the things happening around the district before I close out.[1741.32] So is it already on here? Melinda, is it already on here?
Right here.
I'm not going to remember all the names because I'm going to go through quickly, but you're going to see faces you know. Mr. Gormley, I know you're going to see a face you know in this. So we started the month and again, very, very busy month. We had Middle School Science Fair going on. I was out of the district that evening. I know many of the administrators went and this is when you talk about rigor and you talk about, again, our students getting involved in science projects, collaborative efforts, and I think there are a number and we can just continue to go through them, June. And you can see our students. This is always held at the George School. Mr. Sullivan and Principal Nazarella from the Pluff Academy. And you can see our scientists. This is Wacky Wednesday at the Hancock School. Reading is important, obviously, for our students. And you see them sitting and this is your teacher, Allison McDonald. And she's always fun and kids love reading. They love reading together. This was the Young Women Symposium and this was at the Angelo School. And this is again, Women's Month. You see our own Chief Officer of Student Support Services, Sharon Walder. I know we have Officer Nicole Anderson. I believe that is on the left-hand side, my left-hand side, a lieutenant on the Brockton Fire Department, the first woman lieutenant. And we also have our own Gabby Del Pico, who is a student, I think, a student athlete scholar, has been accepted at Harvard. I'm not sure if she's an alum of the Angelo School, but she went back to address the women. The woman in the back is also, I think, a fitness expert out of Boston. Thank you to Principal Marcia Andrade Serpa. This is your New England Drama Festival. This was Magic Theater. I told you it was presented to all of our third graders. And they competed on Saturday against the likes of Case, Hanover High School, Sturgis Charter School, I believe Attleboro, a number of high schools, and Brockton came in, in their region, number one. Number one in the drama competition. They're going to be performing Magic Theater. I believe it's on the 30th of March at four o'clock at the old Hancock Building, the Dorothy Quincy Suite. I know it has another name now, but if you can go and cheer them on, it is well worth it. I wouldn't miss it. This was Read Across America Day, our counselor, Jack Lally, reading to students. Kids love this. You see our Cat in the Hat, our Thing One and Thing Two, out entertaining kids across the district. And this is Dr. Fred Clark, President of Bridgewater State University with Principal Darlene Campbell. And again, our own Heather O'Reggie and Audrey Brown, Thing One and Thing Two, that come out every year. Mayor Coppinta, this is one of his favorite days. I know he gets to as many schools as he can to read to the kids and they are excited when the mayor comes to read. This I had to put in. This is our Deputy Superintendent, as he shakes his head, his 50th birthday celebration, which we kicked off the month of March 1st. We had a lot of fun with this. No insults to anybody. His wonderful parents who were very excited to come and this is their youngest turning 50. And this is my favorite. Happy 50th birthday, Mike. Yes, you're still older than Dirk. And this was the best part. Beth Sullivan, our Cat in the Hat, did a very special poem for Mike to remind him what it means to be 50. This was the Gilmore Tea. And what I'm doing is I'm going around and I'm meeting with parents at the schools, doing my favorite thing in the morning, which is drinking tea. We have lots of excellent conversation, talks about what's happening in the school, things that they would like to see for their children. Thank you to Principal Mary Beth O'Brien. This was last week. We had the YMCA sponsored an art show. We had, it was wonderful. We had Brockton High School, and I guess it's high school students all over, but Brockton High School was the one that was represented. Thank you to Sarah Richards and our wonderful students. And Mr. Gormley, I think the next one is your daughter. Is that correct? So we're very proud. So you obviously have talent in the family. These are all of the, she has most, but of course, these are all of our Art Award winners at the event. Deca Competition, you heard two of our students are going to Orlando, Florida. This is our Brockton High School Track and Field. They went to New York. I think it was called the Nationals, correct?
The New Balance Nationals.
New Balance Nationals. We were so proud of them. We've got a couple of Brockton High School soccer students who have actually been accepted into the New England Revolution, I think it's called Academy or something very elite. And thank you to Coach Furtado. And this is our Winter Sports Banquet. Our Athletic Director Kevin Caro does a great job of recognizing every season. I know sometimes he's cooking. I didn't happen to make it to this one, but you can see all the different teams, our track team, our girls' sports teams. This has to be swimmers. I see Michelle Zachary. So these are our swimmers. So again, these are all our winter athletes. And thank goodness we're into spring. Today was the start, I guess, of our spring sports. Thank you. And our St. Patrick's Day Celebration, these are our wonderful food service workers who go out. The kids love it. They're wearing their green. They must have come up with an idea that everybody dressed. So these are our cafeterias throughout the district. And you can see the Irish in the wearing of the green very proudly to entertain our children as they serve them. This is a very special woman, a woman that grew up in Brockton and actually reached out to my office, Ann Warren Grace. And she graduated at 16 years old in the class of 1935 from Brockton High School. She was very proud of her upbringing in Brockton. She actually went on to Radcliffe College at age 16, which is your Harvard University now. And we were so thrilled. Dr. Murray had a group of students that put cards together, signatures. We sent a letter from the superintendent's office. So on March 12th of this year, she turned 100 and happy birthday, Ann. Equity in Education Now, this is last evening. Mr. Minichello welcoming my speaking to our parents. And again, this is a letter-writing campaign that we will bring a petition and the letters written last night with us to the State House when we actually go there this Friday, the 22nd. And I want to remind everybody, you heard our student rep talk about tomorrow evening. We have our Spring Choral Concert. It starts at 7:00 PM here at the Auditorium at Brockton High School. Everybody, please join us. We'd like to make sure we have a sellout crowd to support our student chorus singers. And also on Saturday evening, you have the Winter's End Celebration. And that is at the Brockton War Memorial Building. This is to support your Holiday Parade. This year, I know there is recognition to Vinnie McCrina, who was the Parade Marshal back during the holiday season in 2018. And I also know they're going to be talking about the late Kyle Landerholm and all of his support that he offered to the city of Brockton in so many ways. So if you can get out, I think they're still, excuse me, still selling tickets. So I want to finish up with one thing. Sometimes things happen in your life that are very special. And I will have to tell you, first of all, I don't like surprises. And I love when the Deputy Superintendent told me that I was upset with him, that he didn't share with me this surprise and he warned me that I did the same thing to him on his 50th birthday. But last Tuesday, I went to what is called the Women's Educational Leadership Network. It's a conference that happens once a year. I've gone every year during my superintendency. It brings women leaders from all over the state in education. Superintendents. It brings principals together. It brings aspiring leaders together. And I was truly sitting at the table with June Saber and a number of the members from the Brockton team. And lo and behold, they start to talk about the Bobby Delisandro Award. Now, interesting enough, I don't know if that name rings a bell, but Bobby Delisandro is a woman that was part of Mass Association for School Superintendents for years. She was the Cambridge Superintendent. She actually applied for a superintendency here in Brockton back in 2008. And even at that time, I thought she was fabulous. And when they were talking about her, and she was actually on the screen from Fort Myers, where she is now living during the winter months, talking about the award. And I was gabbing the whole time with the superintendent next to me, former Superintendent Peter Durkin from New Bedford, Dr. Durkin, and we were talking about the contributions of Bobby Delisandro. Lo and behold, as I'm sitting there, and I honestly could see June Saber McGuire giving me dirty looks. She was upset that I was on my phone at one point. All the things I don't usually do. I'm usually a very good attention payer. And they called my name as the recipient for the 2019 Women Leadership. I'm trying to think what the award says. I'm going to have to put my glasses on. But I have to tell you, it was the biggest surprise of my life. And as I walked up, we were actually sitting at a back table. For the first time, I was at a loss for words. I was not prepared and I did not know what I was going to say. So this is-
I find that amazing.
This says the 2019 MASSS Bobby Delisandro Award. Tom, I'm thrilled that you were going to say something, but I had to share with you what the experience was. And again, with Women's Month, I work with a lot of wonderful women. I tell them that all the time. I work with a lot of wonderful men. But you know, if you can encourage young girls out there, you know, women leaders, you know, find somebody, mentor somebody, you know, make sure that you're supporting our women in the Brockton community so that they can be all that they can be. So to all the women that I work with, I think we all share this award together. And as I said, I was very excited. And the best part was, as I'm walking up, figuring out what I'm going to say, they say to me, and your mother and your husband are here also. So I was thrilled that my 83-year-old mother, Marie Alward, was there. You know, my husband Jerry Smith was there. And it was pretty emotional, so.
I'd like to give you a round of applause. I think the district should be very proud that Superintendent Smith received this award. It's certainly a very prestigious award. I just want to comment on some of the descriptions that people, her peers basically say about her, that she is values-driven, has great humility, is not afraid to do what is right, even when the idea may not be popular. They go on to say she makes decisions for the good of the students and continues to build trust and trusting relationships. She is bright, courageous, intelligent, builds strong relationships, tough under pressure, consummate leader, dedicated, tenacious. What didn't we know? They should have just asked us and we would have told them. That really sums up, you know, your leadership and certainly your career here in the Brockton Public Schools. Congratulations, well-earned, and we're very proud of you being basically, you know, a daughter of Brockton, you know? Even though you're from Randolph, but you're a daughter of Brockton.
That's right. That is right.
Congratulations, Superintendent.
Thank you very much. And also, I was not here the evening where my retirement was announced. So I just want to say just a couple of words this evening. You know, I am retiring from the Brockton Public Schools on June 30th after 42 years in the district. And although, you know, I'm sure, you know, when I look back on my career, it's obviously important to have been the superintendent of this wonderful district. But when I think back to 42 years, it is being that teacher in the classroom. It is being excited about always having the opportunity to work with students, to work with wonderful teachers, you know, staff, people that really have made a difference in the lives of so many people. I was very excited that you made the decision to bring on Deputy Superintendent Michael Thomas as an interim superintendent. And I want to also say I will work very closely with him. We're already transitioning. He knows I will support him and this district 100% regardless of being retired. You know, I will certainly continue to work in the equity in education in any way I can possibly do to make sure in the end that they fund our schools properly, especially our urban centers and our kids. So at some point, I'm sure I'll have an opportunity to thank people properly. But I did want to say to the Brockton community, again, it has been an educational journey of a lifetime. I can't thank you enough to have been hired in 1977 and to have had the good fortune of being in this district my whole career. So again, I will have more to say in the months to come, but just know I am very confident that the district is heading in the right direction. You have great people. We're leaving it in the hands of people that care about Brockton as much as we all do. So thank you.
We're not letting you get away so quickly. I know with discussions with the mayor that Superintendent Smith is willing to continue on with our fight for equity in education. So she will be continuing on with that project and will be, you know, our best advocate because no one knows the issue inside and out like you do and can articulate it. And certainly perhaps even join the legal team, who knows? I mean, many people don't know, but you are an attorney and you re-upped your bar license, which is wonderful. So we will utilize all of your talents. We're not going to let you get away so quickly. So again, thank you so much for what you do. The award is certainly well-deserved. You basically took it away from me before I could say anything, you know, that you got this award. But that's okay. We know the way you are. So. But we are very proud of you, very proud of you and certainly well-deserved. And especially, you know, where it's an award that your peers, you know, have a great part in terms of picking the person. It couldn't be a better person and we all know that. So thank you so much, Superintendent Smith, for everything you continue to do and everything you've done. But you're not getting away so quickly.
I'm here.
Okay. I want to just, with regard to last evening, I want to thank all of the parents who came out last night to West Middle School. That really was a nice showing. The superintendent, as she stated, will be in Boston with her team. And we wanted the superintendent to be able to deliver to Beacon Hill basically letters, a petition and letters from parents expressing what they've witnessed these past, you know, few years in their children's education. You know, what is bothering them, what's on their mind, the deficiencies. You know, we had, you know, a parent this evening, you know, come in. And that's what last night was all about, to have parents, you know, come forward in their own words, you know, sign these letters, describe what's going on, what their concerns are. And, you know, we'll continue to do more of that, but we appreciate those that came out last evening and everyone who participated. That was a very good event for the community. And we will continue. I know we're going to be continuing with an event for Brockton specifically in upcoming weeks, which will be announced further in terms of letting people know where things are basically at with this movement. So we are not sitting idly by. We have not been. And basically, you know, there was a group that was a collaborator last evening. And, you know, they basically say Brockton is the one that has the ball rolling on this movement. We basically in this community are the ones that have started this fight. Other communities have joined us, which we need and we want. It can't just be about Brockton. It has to be, it has to be a case that shows that the formula is broken. It can't, it's not just broken for Brockton. They can't, Brockton cannot win this alone. The formula is broken, which means that it's broken for many communities and needs to be re-looked at. So we certainly thank the cooperation.
Stand for Children.
Stand for Children, right. Stand for Children. They were with us last evening. They helped us out. And they were very impressed because they said that, you know, when they have these types of nights, they might get 20 people and that's a good night. So we had, you know, we filled the cafeteria. So they were very happy and saying this was a great night. So we will continue to do that, but we wanted to, again, have parental input so that the message is loud and clear on Beacon Hill this budget cycle. You know, the time is now. And I think you guys stole my "now." That was my slogan. So I don't, there's no footnote there. You know, it should have been a footnote for me, but whatever.
Well, you're going to see on lawns throughout the city, you know, it's not Brockton Kids Count. It's Equity in Education Now. That's, we're trying to design it. We want to make sure it's colorful, eye-catching, but it certainly makes a statement. And you did coin the phrase.
Well, there you go.
I was on the phone with you. You coined the phrase.
What can I say? All right. So anyone else? I think Mr. DiAgostino pointed out to me this week, do we need to talk about scheduling some finance subcommittee meetings?
I believe we have the calendar ready to go. I think we're all set.
Okay, so I guess we'll circulate some dates.
Every Tuesday, when I say that, isn't it every Tuesday night we do during budget season? So it's either before a school committee meeting or on those off Tuesdays, we usually have scheduled them. If we don't need them, if there's no movement, then we would cancel them. But at this point here, I think we'll stick with the same format. Is that?
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought we- Okay, which is April 9th.
Okay, great. Anything else? Anyone else?
We'll get the calendar out this week in your packet.
Okay. So I don't think we have any unfinished business, any new business? Or do we have unfinished business? No? Any new business? Mr. DiAgostino?
This will be quick.
Take your time. It's already. Take your time.
No. So periodically, when a council review is reviewing various different expenses and invoices, we'll come across something that requires a little more information than what's available to us immediately in Munis while we're in our meeting. what's available to us immediately in Munis while we're in our meeting. And so when I've had to go to those department heads and involve them, I always try and, you know, publicly thank them for their time. This is one of those occasions where we had some questions for community schools. And I wanted to thank Heather O'Reggie for her help in, you know, digging into the questions I had and doing the research and getting back to me in a timely fashion. And she was just, she was great to deal with, got me exactly what I needed. And so I just wanted to thank her for her time.
Great.
Thank you. And I'm glad you brought that up. We do have a community school board retreat. I believe the date we're settling on is the 30th of March. I know we're putting the invitations together.
There were two dates that I said.
Yeah, I think, I think the 30th is what we're settling on.
Anyone else? No? Nothing for executive session? Okay. Hearing no further business? How about a motion to adjourn from someone?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any further business? We are adjourned.